I'm welcoming viewers in my show set, viewers around the world and viewers all over the social media. My name is Ronald Bernard and I'm hosting the show called Dialogue with the Candidates. Dialogue with the Candidates, it's a show that MCTV, which is multicultural television network, is bringing for the viewers. They can learn about people who are running for office, what are their agenda, what are the political plan, issues they're trying to tackle in order to improve people's life. So today we are glad to have with us Alejandra Saint-Guing.
Hi, how are you?
Good Alejandra, and thank you for accepting, you know, our invitation to be on the show today.
Thank you for asking me.
You very well. So Alejandra, it's your first time at MCTV and we are glad to have you. So how about like you let the audience to know, you know, who is Alejandra and why you're running for city council at large?
Sure, absolutely. So, welcome everyone, thank you so much for listening and tuning in. My name is Alejandra Saint-Guing and I am one of the candidates for city councillor at large. I was born and raised in Mission Hill and my background is in education. I was a public school teacher, civic engagement, where I fought for English language learner rights and better representation for all communities. And then I spent the last four and a half years as the director for immigrant advancement at the city of Boston, where I worked with the multitude of immigrant communities across the city, particularly after Trump was elected and how we were going to protect our immigrant brothers and sisters against the new policies like against DACA, against temporary protected status, and how we were going to protect our neighbors. I'm running for city councillor at large because I believe that we're in a critical moment right now, where the decisions that we make at the local level will have tremendous impact on our education, on our housing, on our transit, and in our climate. And with lack of leadership at the federal level and sometimes the state level, we need local leaders that are from the community and are ready to fight. And I'm ready to fight on day one.
Okay, thank you Alejandra. So I watched, you know, the debate you had at WUBUR.
Yes.
You did mention about the language access bill.
Sure.
So what is the outcome now, like we can consider on the, let's say, the resident of Boston, as we know Boston is diverse, so...
Sure, absolutely. So in, I believe it was 2015, we signed the Language and Communications Access Bill, which created an office within city government, within the Office for Civic Engagement, that would allow agencies, all the different agencies in Boston, to have access to translation interpretation services to better serve their non-English speaking residents who were coming to get services. Some departments in the city of Boston are already federally mandated to have that. So the Boston Housing Authority, your Boston Public Schools, they already had, they already have their office that does that. But the city of Boston, sort of the administrative offices, under the mayor's office in particular, did not have. So with that bill, what we did is we put in certain requirements that all departments needed to have critical information translated in the top seven languages that are spoken in the city of Boston. We put in a budget so that when, so the offices could pay for it and also that they would be able to pay for interpretation services. And so each, each office has their, their own budget that they're able to, to use to make sure that all of the information they have is accessible to people throughout Boston. It was a very important bill and one of the things that I would love to advocate for, should I be on the council, is for more funding, because it is quite a task and it is, it is a lot of work for the offices. And they would need more funding to really expand upon the bill as it is. It's also not just language access, also, that's why we call it Language and Communications Access. So people who are hard of hearing, who are, who have any kind of disability, cognitive disability, are able to also fully access the services that the city offers.
Is that, would that also be beneficial in terms of the equity in education you talk about? For instance, if someone like, let's say, we are parents, as me and Ouija from Haiti, and if someone here, they speak only, you know, Haitian, right? And they don't, you know, understand the English language in terms of going to the school, helping their children. So how does this, you know, language access?
So that's a, so that's a good question. Actually, the Boston Public Schools was required to open their office of language access years before, not like in 2013 or 2014. So that was a federal mandate to allow, to make sure that, that all parents and families had access, had language access and knew what was going on with the schools. They have a much bigger budget and they have put some systems into place to be able to facilitate that for the schools. I have heard that there's still work to do, that there's still some logistics that, that need to be worked out in terms of, you know, being able to get an interpreter on demand. So I mean, you're a parent and you come in for a meeting that was just called or what have you, or you needed to talk to someone about something and it wasn't pre-scheduled, then that, you know, having an interpreter on demand so that they would be able to talk to you, I think is, it would be a good benefit to have in a way that they could expand that office.
I see throughout the campaign, many candidates, they use the term, you know, the word equity almost in front of many words. So if we focus only on education, like we say equity in education, what does that mean to you? And what is your plan?
It's a good question. I think equity has definitely grown significantly in its usage over the past few years. And in a big, a part of that is because equality is giving everyone the same things, right? And equity is giving people what they need based on their situation. So equity in education means that if you have schools that work with predominantly English language learners, that students who are below the poverty line, students that are homeless, students that are, you know, experiencing violence or trauma in their communities, then the services that that school gets has to, has to meet the needs of the students that are there. So it might be more resources than other schools that aren't facing those same challenges. But that's, and that's so that, so, and that's equitable access to education. Because you're taking away the barriers that are put in place for students that currently are unable to, to fully engage in their learning because they are dealing with all of these other factors. And so equity is really how are you treating schools across the, the city? K through eight, I mean, sorry, K through 12, every single school, making sure that that school is serving the needs of the students that attend that school. And that might be different in different places. So the funding formula that just passed, or hasn't passed yet, but that was just passed in the house, which will change the funding formula for the district schools, will have a good, a good impact on Boston because they'll give more funding to the schools that need them. I also, when I talk about equity in education, like you said, is, are all parents and families and caregivers able to access their schools in a way that's culturally and linguistically appropriate to them? So yes, so I believe that full engagement, parent engagement is also an issue of equity. Another thing I would say is that, you know, we have schools with very varying different outcomes and you have to look at the schools and figure out why that is. Now, test scores don't always tell you the whole story, so you can't say, "This is a bad school because it has bad test scores and this is a good school." There's, there's a lot more that goes into that. But there are some measurements that we need to be following to make sure that, that the schools are meeting the needs of their students. And then lastly, I would say equity in education is really looking at our high schools and how are they equitable across the board. As we know, we have three exam schools that have had great results. And I went to one of them, Boston Latin School, great results in, in graduating students, going to college. What we've seen is the admissions process has not, has not, the results of that, the admissions process have not been equitable in terms of that there's a great disparity between black and Latino students and white and Asian students. And so looking at what are the reasons for that, is there something that we could adjust it? To give everyone equal opportunity, right, to be able to enter. But even when we have, if we fix that, even with that fixed, you still have 75% of the students who are not going to go to an exam school. So looking at our high schools across the board and making sure that we have the best high schools in every single, well, I don't know if we have them in every single neighborhood, but we have the best high schools to meet, for every single student that, that attends, that enrolls. And so that means if you're at a district school, that's a non-exam school, you're still getting a great education, you're still have, you still have access to the resources, you're still, if you want to be college, you know, college ready. There, you can do that in a school that you aren't, that's not an exam school. You can do that, that is a possibility. And then I would say one other big push, and I've heard it from a number of candidates, is the push for a really strong Volk Ed technical school. So a school that is teaching the trades, that is doing, that is teaching tech jobs, healthcare jobs, basically the jobs of the future and the jobs of Boston. And to students who want to, who might not have college in their, in their future, because that's not something that they're interested in, but they have the right to, to have a job with sustaining wages and with benefits, and these are good jobs. Good jobs meaning you can afford, you can afford to live in Boston, you can, you have benefits, you know, something that you can raise your family on. And the thing, and the fact of the matter is that these jobs exist in abundance and we have students in abundance, what we don't have is a good match between them. So we have Madison Park right now, which is, has never really reached its full potential. And I think there's been a lot of attempts to do that and this is not a knock on Madison Park leadership. But I think that there has been, we haven't invested enough as a city in that school and giving that, the school the resources that they need to really, really thrive. And I think we have the potential because we have all the partners that we need, we have the capital that we need and the jobs are, are there. We're not trying to create jobs, they, they exist. So, and, and employers in those industries are going to other tech schools to hire people. They're going to Worcester, they're going to Quincy, they're going to South Shore to, to hire students from those Volk tech schools. And we have those students right here in Boston that, that they can be hiring. So a real focus on that, I think, is it will also, will also provide greater equity across the board.
Thank you Alejandra. So I would like to remind all the viewers, you are listening to MCTV, which is multicultural television network. And the program you are listening right now is Dialogue with the Candidates. Dialogue with the Candidates, it's a program that provides you information, who are running, who is, like people who are running for office. So you can know better about them and when you go to the poll, you can make informed decision. So today we are with us, Alejandra Saint-Guing, who is running for city council at large for Boston. So Alejandra, I remember, like, when I say I remember, it's the term that I saw you were using and I believe that is on your website somehow, it's the term climate justice. So if you don't mind to, you know, explain what is climate justice, number one, and number two, it's like if we look at Boston, so what are the, you know, issue regarding this subject?
Yeah, yeah. It's a great question. When I, when I first ran for office, there were areas that I was very familiar with because of my past work, education, immigration, civic engagement. These were areas that I was very familiar with. And, and then obviously through personal experience, transportation is just something you know is, is, it needs to be fixed, you know? But one thing that really started sticking out to me is just the level of attention given to our climate change and to our, you know, its impact over the next five, 10, 15 years and the, and what it's going to, what's going to happen if we don't do something, if we don't take some aggressive measures to mitigate the impacts of climate change. We're going to get, our days are going to get hotter, we're going to have more hot days, we're going to have more storms, where, you know, we can have a big incident, incident like a hurricane Sandy or something that could really impact the city. And so the, the idea of climate justice is how are we mitigating those impacts? Meaning how are we, what are we doing to put our carbon levels down? So that, so that we're putting so much pollution in the air and that when it rains, right, that it's not, it's not, that we're able to absorb it, right? Because when we can't, then it gets hotter. It's a whole thing. But basically, it's, it's, it's going to impact all of our communities, everyone across Boston. What we've also seen, and this is where climate justice comes into effect, is that communities of color and low-income communities are going to be disproportionately impacted because they are the least prepared and the least resilient for, for those, for the climate change. For example, I'll give you one example, heat, right, heat map. So we're, temperatures have been rising, which brings a lot of issues, heightened rates of asthma, heightened rates of allergy, weatherborne allergies, which are predominant in low-income communities and communities of color that have, that are near highways, that have less trees. If you take a map, a heat map, and that shows how hot it is in different areas, and you put a redlining map on top of it. So redlining was a system that the banks used to keep blacks, mostly blacks and Latinos, but at the time mostly, it was mostly blacks, out of certain neighborhoods and not, and not giving them loans, not, and so that they couldn't buy within their own neighborhoods. And so that's how you really got people pushed into certain neighborhoods. If you overline that, you'll see that the places that were redlined are the places that are actually hotter to this day. And they're hotter because they had less investment in green space, in open space, and in trees, right? And so that is a systemic injustice that has, has carried over into how we are able to combat climate change. And so if as communities of color, we continue to be less, less prepared and less resilient, that when climate action happens, we are most, most at risk of being displaced. So when we talk about climate justice, we talk about, so the seaport is at risk, hugely at risk of basically flooding completely, right? Because it wasn't built well at all. Now, that's not a low-income community, that's a high-income community. But if the people there start saying, "Well, we don't want to live here anymore because we're at risk of being flooded out, let's start moving closer inland." And then you have communities that currently live there that are also getting displaced. So there's just so many domino effects to, to what can happen when every single community is not equally prepared and equally resourced to be able to combat a, what could be a climate incident, a climate catastrophe. And so, and it's very much tied to systemic injustices that we've had throughout the years across the board, in real estate, in economic development, in urban planning. So this is, so when we say climate justice, it's how are, how is the climate change affecting different people in different ways? And how are we resourcing those most vulnerable to be able to be the most resilient?
As you're talking about the climate change, because what I have seen, in my observation, it's, it requires a lot of sensitization, like make people aware.
Sure.
So I don't know, do you have any plan, like you getting like to, like how you're going to sensibilize people around this issue?
That's a great question. So, and something that I thought a lot about because I, you know, I understand at one time, you know, climate change and environmentalism was, wasn't seen as an issue in our communities. And at the end of the day, it actually impacts our communities more than anybody else. And so for me, I think a very strong education campaign about what, what it is and what it means to live in a neighborhood that's hotter than another neighborhood. And so you can advocate to have more trees or more green space, more open space, and that you're making, or, or communities that are being rapidly developed, right? So are there enforcements in place to make sure that they're, that it's all renewable energy, that they're maintaining a level of green space? But I think the education piece is huge and how it impacts you as an individual. And also I would say, what are the small changes that you can make as an individual to really impact the climate, you know, climate change? And so things like we ban the plastic bags in Boston, that single-use plastic bags, straw. I'm not sure if straws are banned yet, but I know that that's been, people have been converting to the paper straws or to the cups without straws. So I think that, you know, educating people on the bigger picture, on what's happening, on what's happening in their specific neighborhood and what they should do to advocate for themselves. And then also on an individual level, what can they do? What are the small steps they can take every day to, to limit their carbon footprint? And for us at government, it's really seeing those small steps and is there a role for government to help people make even bigger steps? So if we want people to compost, then we need a citywide composting plan. Because right now, if you want to compost, you pay someone to come and get it. Not everyone is going to be able to do that.
So if we're now taking the topic, let's say, economic development, and we try to make the correlation with housing, you know, affordability or accessibility. So we look at income inequality. So what is the correlation as me living in Boston, I see like, you know, the rent and even if like, can like, someone who's making, let's say, many of the people who are resettling in the US, how much like, you know, how much they will make for a household of two or three? Like, you know, let's say 30,000 or 40,000, that's not enough.
That's not enough, right.
So how you plan to, let, let's talk first about the correlation between income inequality and housing accessibility. How do you see that?
Yeah, it's a great question. You know, when we, we are one of the most unequal cities in this, in the country, actually, when it comes to the wealth disparity between white families and, and black families and Hispanic families and Asian families. And so, you know, one thing that we see that we are less represented in sort of homeownership rates. So when you have a community that is rapidly gentrifying and has a lot of renters, they have less protections and they are more at risk for displacement. And so if they do not have the, the means for economic mobility, whether that be through education, through training, or through jobs, then it's going to, it's going to continue to be a cycle where communities of color are pushed out because they're, they're less likely to be homeowners. And even when they are homeowners, the role of, of, what do you call them? Speculators in trying to get, you know, buy people's homes for a million dollars and, you know, all of that, which happens, which happens a lot. And so I think that there's a, there's a real link in what are the educational opportunities? What are the job training opportunities for immigrants who are, need to be recertified in a profession? What are those opportunities? What are our English language learner opportunities? All of these are economic development. They are education, but they are directly tied to economic development. And until we have a more equitable wealth acquisition, we are going to consistently find that we have neighborhoods that as they get gentrified, they get less diverse and people of color are displaced. I will also say, I had another, I will also say that this, even just to take it one step further, beyond how, well, beyond housing is the cannabis industry. And the issue, what's been the issue of people of color and their access to be able to take part in the industry, particularly since communities of color were the most impacted by the war on drugs. And so the, one of the biggest barriers is capital, right? The capital investment to be able to open. So what is the role that we can take as a, as a government to, to mitigate that? Either can we have, you know, people put in a big pot or have, you know, have more ownership? I mean, I think that there's, we're not going to have more owners of color unless we give them the more opportunities to do that. And so, you know, I see everything is, is tied together and then to housing is tied directly to jobs. So as we build 800 units of housing in Dudley, are the jobs to build those units going to people who live in Dudley? Are the jobs at the, the building and the businesses, are they going to the people who live in that area? And so, you know, there, there is a, there is a deep correlation between economic inequality and housing affordability, for sure.
Once more, I would like to remind the viewers, you're still listening to Dialogue with the Candidates. And it's the show that MCTV is bringing to inform you about, you know, people who are running for office, who they are and their plan. And you, when it's time to go to the poll, you will make informed decision. And we are with us, Alejandra Saint-Guing, and she's running for city at large council for Boston. So we know that in order to make things happen, it's only one person.
Yes, right.
It's a group, it's a team.
Yes.
So how you prepare yourself to work with other councillors if you get elected in order to bring results for people in Boston?
No, that's a, that's a great question. On the council, there are 13 councillors, four at large and nine district. And, you know, who, I would say, what we all have in common is a deep love for the city and a deep love to make, make the city, you know, a better place for everyone to live. We might have varying opinions on how to do that. I think if we guide through that lens of, of, we need, we're creating a better place for all of our residents and I think we can find more common ground than not. And not to say there aren't going to be differences of opinion, not to say that there aren't going to be areas where we differ, but I think it's important that we build together. It's also why it's extremely important that, you know, you have a council that reflects the city in terms of experience, in terms of life experiences, ethnicity, backgrounds. And so, you know, that also will help tremendously in, in terms of working with other like-minded councillors. So I would say also, you know, one thing that's hugely important in terms of team building and collab, or in terms of collaboration, actually, I should say, is, and one thing that's hugely important to me, is actually bringing more people to the table. So making sure all stakeholders, and I mean, community members, I mean, nonprofit leaders or community leaders, church leader, whoever that has a stake in their neighborhood and who is impacted by the policies that we're putting in place, that they are active members in creating that policy. And for me, I think that is going to be the real measure if, if we actually have change. Because if we have a community-led process in deciding how, how land is going to be developed, that's going to look very different than having a developers-led process on how it's going to be developed, right? And so that's when we talk about people-centered policy, that's what we mean. Is that it's about the people, it's about those most impacted, it's about them leading the way. And basically councillors sort of helping guide and helping push through. But it's really, the, the leadership comes from the community.
As Boston is diverse, you know, there's a great diversity there. So how do you navigate like among the communities? So what is the relation? How do you develop your relation with the, you know, different communities in Boston?
Yeah, I mean, I think you're having, my history with OIS Day, having worked at the Office for Immigrant Advancement, have worked with diverse communities across the entire city and understanding that each community's needs are different. There are some that transcend all communities. I will say housing is an issue that transcends all communities and we should think about it equitably across all communities. And also understand what are, what are the unique needs of, of the, of the different communities? And how do you, how do you address them? And also how, what are you doing to advance them as well? And so it's, when you're a city councillor at large, you're, you're councillor for the entire city. So you really have to make sure that you are open to everyone in the city. And there might be parts of the city that are more in line with what you're, what you're about or what you're promoting, and other parts of cities that are, that are less so, but those are still your constituents. And so I think it's equally important that you are servicing, you are serving everyone. I also will say that there are some communities that are just going to have, need more government intervention because of just... that are just going to have, need more government intervention, because of just generations and generations of systemic inequalities. So I look at, you know, low-income communities need more government intervention, as we think about housing, as we think about education. Communities of color need, you know, more, more government attention, you know? And it's not because people who are middle-class or wealthy don't need government. I think government is for everyone, the infrastructure is for everyone, but there are certainly communities that are going to need you more than others. And I think it's important to, to keep that lens as well.
Okay. So now we are at the end of the show Dialogue with the Candidates, and this is something that I always do when, you know, we have people, we're taking their time and coming here to talk about their political agenda and why they're running for office. So Alejandra, now it's your time to make a kiss to the audience of MCTV.
Sure, absolutely. Well, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Alejandra St. Guillaume. I am running for Boston City Council at Large. I am someone who has worked, spent 20 years in public service, and has worked inside and outside government. I'm uniquely positioned to hit the ground running on day one. There are various parts of me, as a native Boston, as a new mom, as the daughter of an immigrant, that really shape who I am, and create, make me an empathetic voice on the council. And I'm excited to get started, to build in partnership with all of you, a better Boston for all of us. My name is Alejandra St. Guillaume. I'm number two on the ballot, and I humbly ask for one of your four votes on November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you, Alejandra. And all the viewers, the election is on November 5th. So Alejandra St. Guillaume making her case, why you should vote for her, and she's running for City Council at Large for Boston. So you have been listening to Dialogue with the Candidates, and thank you, Alejandra, for accepting and sharing the idea with the public, and all the audience, I will see you for the next show. Thank you.